Clerk Seigur, can you please take roll call?
Borninski. Foster.
Good evening.
Ganguly.
Good evening.
Grim Hudeak.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Seigur is in attendance. Slavens?
Good evening.
Anne Snideman is not in attendance.
Thank you. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of item G zero?
Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt the agenda with one add-on to be placed at G zero. Consider accepting an institute for responsive government grant for elections and approving a budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigur, supported by Trustee Foster. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for August 13th, 2024?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigur, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. So right now, we're going to do public comments on agenda items only. General public comments are at the end. So is there anyone in the room that would like to do public comment on agenda items only? Please go to the podium for three minutes and you can just give us your thoughts on the agenda items and we will consider them as we vote for them. Anybody in the room for agenda items only? Okay, thank you. Mr. McCausland?
Good evening. Dan McCausland, 328 Hagerty wrote, I'd like to speak about item G 10. I know this has come before the board before. Create an opportunity for YAC involvement. I think that stands for youth council involvement, which I'm all for. That's fine. I'd like to take that one step farther. If we're going to open this up to a subset, I think we should also have some citizens at large that could be able to do the same thing. I think that would be more of a liaison to the board along with, you know, we can't just pick one group. We can't pick a subset and say, we want the youth. How about the old? How about the middle? How about everybody else? We're everybody. So yeah, I'm all for that. I'm all for getting more public involvement, getting more people in these rooms, getting more people to know their community. So I would behoove you to have a conversation when it comes up to that and see how we can get some citizens at large involved in the same format. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, let me look online and see if anyone is online for public comment on agenda item only. If you're online, you can electronically raise your hand. I see everyone is, does not have just a phone, so you do have Zoom. So anyone online, please raise your hand if you would like to have public comment. I don't see any. All right, thank you. All right, next, payment of bills.
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is a resolution. A resolution regarding the radioactive waste scheduled to come up to Wayne County. Whereas Canton Township borders Van Buren Township and is adjacent to the Wayne Disposal Incorporated hazardous waste landfill that is preparing to take 6,000 cubic yards of soil and concrete and 4,000 gallons of groundwater contaminated with elevated radiation from Niagara Falls Storage Site in Lewiston, New York, which from 1944 until 1952 served as a primary storage location for waste and byproducts associated with uranium or refining. Whereas the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is working on a multi-year project to remove the elevated radiation waste from the Niagara Site with 25 semi-trailer loads a week of the radioactive waste shipped on local highways and roads beginning in late August through January 2025. Whereas a conference of Western Wayne comprised of 18-member communities representing over 730,000 residents passed a resolution in opposition to the proposed plan. Whereas Canton Township officials were not notified of the upcoming transport of radioactive waste through and near our community and public safety issues of this magnitude affect the entire region and surrounding communities in Michigan, putting our residents, motorists and infrastructure in harm's way. Whereas government officials and residents have no say in what occurs at Michigan disposal, although it directly impacts the health and welfare of our communities. And whereas questions about why the Wayne disposal site was selected, why local officials and the public were not notified, what safety measures are being taken for the transport and disposal of materials, whether the waste will be tested before landfilling, what protocols and technologies are being used to safely manage and contain the waste, and what ongoing monitoring of materials all remain unanswered, now therefore be that. Resolve the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton formally request that Wayne disposal reconsider accepting radioactive waste and the federal government seek alternative solutions to disposing of their radioactive and hazardous waste that does not jeopardize our citizens and infrastructure, including changing interstate agreements. And further resolve that township officials be notified in advance of all transport of the referenced waste, including but not limited to specific safety measures during transport routes of the semi-trailers and what dates and times the semi-trailers will be traveling through our community.
Support.
A motion made by myself, supported by Trustee Borninski. Our, thank you Clerk Seigur for writing this up. Any discussion of the board? I know there's probably a lot of discussion because this has been on the radio and a lot of our residents are calling. Okay?
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize the part about asking the federal government to change interstate agreements. And I was hoping that you could explain that a little bit so that residents understand why that's in there.
Sure, it's interesting because a lot of the residents said, when they said to me, they said, aren't you just writing a resolution which is just a piece of paper, what changes? And until you change the interstate agreements that allow this, I guess about 17 years ago, the Supreme Court supposedly ruled that toxic waste and waste was considered business interstate commerce and could not be denied. And so they turned down a community that wanted to do that. And part of that is what we would like to change. We have to ask for those changes because we can lay in front of trucks and try to stop everything we can. But until we change the laws that allow this interstate agreement of toxic waste from Canada and from other states, that's one issue, one of the issues. So that's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you Supervisor Grim Hudeak for your leadership with the Conference of Western Wayne and passing a similar resolution with the 18 communities there. And to thank you Clerk Seigur for helping draft this resolution for us today.
Tanya?
Madam Supervisor, do you want the community to know that there will be a future town hall on this issue and with the state and like county and federal officials?
Yes, actually it's supposed to be the Wednesday after Labor Day. We're still waiting for details. But Congresswoman Dingell was in a conference today in Plymouth Township, like an open town hall. And a lot of the residents went to talk about this issue to her. And I heard it on the radio. So people are up in arms and they want to know what to do. They've said they don't want just to be told, yes, you have to tell us what's coming in so we can say, wave to the trucks as they go by. We want this stopped. What else?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo Trustee Foster's comments and thank both you and Clerk Seigur for taking the lead on this.
Michael, do you want to say anything?
I just wouldn't overstate my involvement. I edited the Conference of Western Wayne's resolution. It was.
Strong.
You know, I added a little bit to it, but it was, I'm grateful, I'm grateful that we have a Conference of Western Wayne and that we're active in it and that you are in leadership there and that they were proactive in this and that all of the elected officials and all of the appointed officials in the region have taken this serious on behalf of the residents. So.
Thank you. Yeah, this Diane?
Yeah, and just thank you for your charge on this because I know you went to Conference of Western Wayne with this idea because it is a huge issue. So thank you very much.
No, thank you. If you think about it, a lot of, this has been happening for a long time. A lot of people don't know that. But the newspapers made this a big deal because of it coming from New York and being radioactive waste that should stay, you know, where it was. And so that was the big thing. Because we don't know how much has been going in there. And they call it a safe site, but what does that mean, right? It comes down our roads and affects all of us. Thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Great, motion passes and we'll pass this out to everybody. Thank you. If you want to be at the, like Tanya said, at the meeting, we will let everyone know where that is and we'll post that. All right, next on the agenda, we have the consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar as presented with item C1. Consider increasing one blanket purchase order for Cruisers Incorporated. C2, consider approval of the 2024, of 2024 budget adjustments. C3, consider second reading of an amendment to the Canton Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 46, offenses and misdemeanor provisions. Item C4, consider second reading of an amendment to the Canton Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 70, adoption of uniform traffic code.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigur, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G1, consider word of contract to Michigan Consulting. I'm sorry, G zero, you're right. Thanks for.
Good catch Diane.
Consider accepting an institute for responsive government grant for elections and approving a budget adjustment.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve accepting an institute of responsive government grant in the amount of $60,000 and authorize the attached budget adjustment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigur, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Canton Clerk's Office has been awarded an institute for responsive government grant for elections in the amount of $60,000. Clerk Seigur, do you want to talk about that?
Frequently organizations would like to help support election administration. This has been common in the last couple of years, especially common in Michigan where the entire election system has become more involved and more complicated, more challenging, and then by proxy, more expensive to administer. We have a long history now of accepting these grants. We had received a grant from the Center for Technology and Civic Life for just over $40,000 in 2020, which allowed us to offset the cost of temporary salaries for the increases in that cost of administering the presidential election that year. And so this is a larger grant. It's $60,000. We were approved very quickly. And we will be using it to help offset the cost again of temporary salaries in the Clerk's Office and then also for the purposes of promoting early voting and some of the new voting methods. A lot of, a lot has changed in the elections process, but voters aren't necessarily entirely aware of the nuances of early voting in person versus early absentee. And so we're going to be doing the best we can to help educate them in that. So this will save us some money and allow us to do some fun stuff.
Good. Any questions or comments? So this comes in, when do you get this? In August, right?
Sorry?
When does this grant come in? This is accepting it, correct?
Yeah, I mean, when does the money get deposited? I have no idea how long it will take to receive the money. A, I can tell you, I mean, we were approved within a day. So I think they are eager to distribute it. So I, we, we are amending the budget to receive the $60,000 in the current calendar year. So I assume we will be getting it prior to December 31st.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now G1, consider a word of contract to Michigan Consulting and Environmental to perform an environmental assessment.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the budget amendment and contract with Michigan Consulting and Environmental for $13,760 for environmental review services at ZB West Park.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigur, supported by Trustee Borninski. Canton Township is in the process of developing ZB West Park located at 6125 North Ridge Road. Funding for this project is being provided by the Department of Housing and Urban Development and therefore requires an environmental review of the property. Quotes were requested and the initial quote came in at $7,850. After further review from the consultant and additional consultation with Michigan State Historic Preservation Office was required, will cost an additional $5,910, which necessitates board approval. Director Trumbull, do you want to add anything?
Sure. We were very well aware when we, when we received the grant that there was going to be an environmental review that was required as part of this. So we did get quotes. The three quotes that we got were under $10,000, so we didn't come forth to the board. And then we found out after we started this process that more work was required as part of this after we've already committed to this company. And they, they were the ones who really discovered it. So we needed to come forth to the board to make sure the board was comfortable also proceeding with the company we selected. We just, we would have gone out to bid because it's over 10,000 had we realized that in advance. We just, we didn't know this was a requirement until after we got a little bit into the project further. So it will be covered with the grant dollars that we got for ZB West Park. But again, we just weren't sure. We didn't realize we were going to have anything over $10,000 when we initially went with this company.
Great, thanks. Any questions or comments? Kate?
Just, I'm actually glad that we have to do the, the historic preservation assessment because we do want to know if there happens to be any historic significance, any archaeological sites. So it would be good.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G2, consider increasing the purchase order to AM Higley for the Public Works Storage Facility.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase order increase for AM Higley to contract the necessary trades to complete the construction of the Public Works Storage Facility in the amount of $172,714.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigur, supported by Treasurer Slavens. As part of Canton Township's effort to effectively deliver and manage water and sewer services, the Public Works Division needs to expand their storage facilities for operations, inventory and equipment maintenance. In collaboration with the managers within the Municipal Services Division, it was determined that a new building constructed within the Public Works Yard is feasible. At the July 23rd Board Meeting, MSD requested and gained approval to purchase a prefabricated building. Additionally, at the August 13th Board Meeting, MSD requested and gained approval to increase the PO for AM Higley to contract trades involved to begin constructing the new Public Works Storage Facility. This request to increase the PO to AM Higley is to secure the final two trade contractors, painting and mechanical. Director Norwood, do you want to add to this?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything else to add, but happy to answer any questions. I think this is the last piece of the project we need to report at this point.
Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
I didn't indicate who supported that. I'm sorry.
That was Treasurer Slavens.
All right Diane.
Item G3, request approval for a new security camera head-end server.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the contract and purchase order to GSI Incorporated for the security camera server in the amount of $59,493.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigur, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Facilities and ITI Services Departments have been jointly working with our security company, GSI, to identify possible security risk and replacement of portions of our security systems that can provide updated improved service along with state-of-the-art security systems, components and solutions. Beginning in 2024, the Board of Trustees adopted a capital improvement plan which included the replacement of some portions of the system that are vulnerable and overdue for replacement. The purpose of the RFP is to replace our end-of-life systems, aid and system for public safety and the security of assets and employees with improved and more capable replacement systems. Director Abegbu, do you want to add to that?
Not really, but I can take questions.
One thing that we didn't state is that, so basically the township's current systems includes cameras no longer working or supported by the manufacturer because of their age. We also have something called Vision China State Surveillance Cameras. So some of the cameras we do have to get rid of because the federal government has banned them because of, because of phoning home. Any questions or comments? Michael?
Is there a reason we are not going with like a cloud-based system? Is there a reason we want an onsite server? Is that, is that necessary to go with GSI or is it preferred from a security backup standpoint or?
The proposed solution is a solution that is, first of all, let me back up. The Hig Vision cameras that Madam Supervisor mentioned are part of the camera, camera systems that federal government already put a ban on, that they should not be in existence in any government institution. And so when you take that out of the market, there are other recommendations as well that federal government already also banned. So it kind of limits the number of options that you have based on the products that can be implemented inside of federal government or government, any government institution. So that's number one. And so when we went out into the market with our consultant, we had a consultant through MSD looking at all our options and looking at the kind of design that will give us what we want. And then we boiled it down to this particular solution. Yes, indeed, there are cloud solutions for these things. But when it comes to security, things like this on security, the consultant, they recommend that we go with this particular design that will have the head-end here. It should be noted as well that while this solution right here is for the main building, we're also doing the same, but not now. It's not in front of you yet for PD because that their own system is secluded. It's not part of this general one.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G4, consider awarding a contract and purchase order to replace two drinking fountains at the Village Theater at Cherry Hill.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the contract and purchase order for continuum services in the amount of $15,400 to replace two drinking fountains at the Village Theater at Cherry Hill.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigur, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Beginning in 2023, the Board of Trustees adopted a capital improvement plan for the replacement of two drinking fountains at Village Theater at Cherry Hill. The drinking fountains are original to the building. Their usage over time has found the brass finishes worn off, making for a less than attractive appearance. And we would like to provide a new fountain backstage with a bottle filler for the convenience of the performance, performers. Director Norwood, do you want to add to that?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything to add at this point, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, just a clarification. There's a reference to a water fountain that's backstage that we wanted to be able to fill water bottles at? Is that in addition to these two or? Okay, thank you. So we're actually approving three?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. And it's loosely tied to this agenda item. But more so, it's the agenda item's existence. When was the last time we set the threshold for board approval? It's 10,000, right? Was that, was that, am I remembering it? It was in 2016?
I can't remember if it was 2016 or if it was a little bit before that, but we completely revised the purchasing policy in 2016. One of the things with the new ERP system that's coming out and which we're anticipating having in place, not this upcoming, not for '25, but for '26 for the full year. We're planning on bringing forth a new board-approved policy at that point in time to readdress, or excuse me, we're going to recommend a new policy to the board and get some input from the board beforehand as to what the appropriate level of approvals we need to bring forward to the board. Part of that, we'll look at other communities of similar size and, you know, kind of bring forth what other communities are doing. Sometimes professional services require a different level than some commodity purchases. So there, we're going to take a look at that to figure out what the right level is. So certain small items, you know, might not have to come before the board. But to your point, yeah, it was 2016, maybe earlier, prior to that, it was $5,000. So that was a pretty big jump from five to 10. But, but it's probably time to readdress that and look at that for moving forward. So look for that. Probably sooner rather than later. We just don't want to have to redo two different systems at the same time. So we're probably going to get some input and as we're designing the new system, so we're ready to go once the new system is ready to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Support 2016.
Who else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G5, consider awarding a contract and purchasing order to replace three RTUs at Fellow Creek Golf Course.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the contract and purchase order for quality air systems in the amount of $162,077.75 for the HVAC unit replacement at Fellow's Creek Golf Course.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigur, supported by Trustee Borninski. Beginning in 2024, the Board of Trustees adopted a capital improvement plan for the replacement of three rooftop HVAC units at Fellow's Creek Golf Course. Rooftop units are over 18 years of age with an original projected lifespan of 15 to 20 years. In recent years, the performance of the unit has been declining and it has experienced a few larger issues related to the functions of the unit, including a bad heat exchanger on one of the units. These units are considered a critical infrastructure for the course. They maintain the main section of the clubhouse, including where banquet events and rentals are held. Director Norwood, do you want to answer anything? Just to let you know, Deputy is also on, Jen Zelinas, he's on the line also.
Yes, thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have any, anything to add and happy to answer questions. And you're correct, Deputy Director John, John Zelinas is on the line also to help us out.
Comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G6, consider first reading of an amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances regarding Cherry Hill and Beck rezoning.
Madam Supervisor, I move to introduce the first reading of the proposed amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the Charter Township of Canton as provided in the attached ordinance of the subject planning application, which rezones the subject tax parcel from RR Rural Residential to R2 Single Family Residential.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seigur, supported by Trustee Foster. The applicant proposes to rezon parcel at 4803 of Cherry Hill Road as parcel numbers listed, located on the north side of Cherry Hill Road and west side of Beck Road from RR Rural Residential to R2 Single Family Residential. The subject parcel is 11 acres and includes a single-family residence. The northern part of the property is farmed. The Mott Drain runs west to east through the north part of the site and the ITC power lines run through the north end of the site. The applicant proposes to assemble the subject parcel within two parcels to the east as listed numbers, which are currently zoned R2 and construct a 68-unit detached single-family residential development on a 34.68 acre site. A conceptual layout plan for the proposed development site is included with the rezoning application, which, application which proposes site access from Cherry Hill Road and Beck Road. The rezoning application is not conditioned on the conceptual layout plan and the site layout and the number of units will be determined subsequently during the site plan review process. At its meeting on August 12th, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning application. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I, I don't have anything to add at this point, but Community Planner Patrick Sloan is here to also answer any questions.
Patrick, do you want to add anything?
I've got, I've got nothing to include at this time, but I'm happy to answer any questions about the report or the plans.
Thanks. Trustee Foster, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Any discussion on this? I know there's, I've seen some, Tanya?
Yeah, I, I'm a little concerned about the traffic in this area because I think Beck Road and both these roads are single-lane roads and there's, I don't know where the exits will be from the subdivision and will that lead to congestion because there is an elementary school at the corner there. So that's my biggest concern right now. So I'm willing to, you know, and of course, there is the Mott Drain and how the, how that impacts with increased flooding in our area. So those are my concerns right now, but I'm going to, willing to wait to see how the plans, the site plans and other things shape out.
Patrick, or do you want to add anything? I mean, I think the Planning Commission discussed some of that, didn't they?
Sure, I can, I can talk a little bit about the traffic. And along the frontage of this subject parcel along Cherry Hill Road, as well as one of the assembly parcels along Beck Road are single-lane parcels in front of, or single lanes for the road in front of those subject parcels with one lane in each direction. The frontages along Cherry Hill Road and Beck Road, both roads are under the jurisdiction of Wayne County. So ultimately, Wayne County will be responsible for enforcing. So ultimately, Wayne County will be responsible for enforcing any kind of intersection improvements, traffic management solutions within the road right of way. One of the areas of concern in the traffic study was the proposed site drive at Beck Road and parcel that fronts it. Although that particular parcel's not the subject of the rezoning application, it's part of the concept plan and part of the overall discussion of the rezoning. And that site drive proposed on Beck Road was indicated at a Level Service E in the traffic study, which is below an acceptable threshold. There were some differences between the traffic impact study and the synchro models there. Our traffic engineering consultant, Wade Trim, had reviewed the traffic study and noted that one of their recommended conditions at that site drive on Beck Road is to add a fifty-foot wide right turn lane going southbound in order to relieve any congestion southbound on Beck Road. On top of that, I know we're getting a little bit ahead looking at the conceptual development plan, but we, we find it's important to discuss it at the rezoning, especially when we have those details, is that there's a left turn lane northbound on Cherry Hill Road that starts to taper off on the south side of the subject property along Beck Road. And one of the recommendations from our Engineering Services Division was on the concept plan, try to locate that driveway at Beck as far south as possible so that some of that left turning traffic going northbound can be caught in that left turn lane and used, and that there's some additional width along the pavement of Beck Road on the right side for vehicles to, to pass over so that it can help additionally relieve a little bit of congestion that may take place along Beck Road at that proposed site drive. The last item that I'll note is that in the traffic impact study at the intersection of Cherry Hill Road and Beck Road, many of the left turn movements are proposed to be at a Level Service D in the future, which is still within the acceptable range, but it, it starts to get a little bit more busy. And if traffic increases continue, then eventually it may find itself at a Level Service E, at which case improvements are necessary to keep traffic flowing. So although the traffic impact study doesn't indicate any Level Service E at the intersection of Cherry Hill and Beck as a result of the proposed development in the future at buildout, there are some additional, there are additional capacity delays as a result of adding more vehicles to the intersection. So those are some of the traffic issues that we discussed at the Planning Commission and with our traffic engineers.
Anyone else, Tanya? Any other questions or comments?
Kate has.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Yeah, Patrick, I, I know this is just rezoning, but as we think about site plan and since we are still in the process of updating our master plan, first of all, I'm wondering, you know, what measures will be taken to alleviate flooding in the area? I'm concerned because Mott drain is there and Mott drain runs right near an elementary school as well. Certainly wouldn't want homes to be flooded, but if a school was flooded, that would be awful too. So consideration of that, especially since we're updating the master plan and there may be new considerations for flooding in that. Also, because it is near the school, as we look, look towards the site plan, you know, I'm not sure if there are sidewalks there. I don't think they, I, I don't think the sidewalks extend that far to, to the, you know, the proposed development. So I'm hoping that we can, you know, ask for some sidewalks to be put in.
Okay, those are, those are two really good points. With the connection of the sidewalks at the time of site plan review, one of the things that we'll try to facilitate is discussions between the applicant and Plymouth Canton Community Schools to see if there is possibility for a connecting sidewalk between the site and the schools. Either way, there will be sidewalks required along the frontages of Cherry Hill Road and Beck Road, but to your point, there will be a sidewalk gap between those frontages of the proposed development and the frontages of the school itself. So that will be something that we push for.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I would imagine that if there are children in that new subdivision, then they would be probably zoned for the school there.
I would hope so. And with the stormwater management, we've had discussions with the applicant in terms of the overall stormwater issues in the community, the undergoing review by the Army Corps of Engineers, and the fact that the drain is a proposed outlet for their stormwater pond. So they're aware of our concerns with drainage, and they know that if this proceeds to site plan review, it's one thing that will be top of mind for staff as well as the board and the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Are we looking at ITC also? I know you met with ITC the other day to look at maybe utilizing some of the land as a retention pond behind it, maybe include that.
That's another discussion that we may have in terms of ITC's willingness for a detention pond there. We were also going to discuss with ITC the potential for trail easement or something in the future that may connect to this development as well.
Michael?
I was having an interesting conversation with former Canton Township Planner Jim Castillo yesterday, and he came on in nineteen sixty-eight, or seventy-eight. And at that time, the only neighborhood that existed west of Canton Center was Sunflower. And at that time, he was, he was telling me how during the seventies, the control of the township board would flip between the, the NIMBYs and the YIMBYs, you know, should you, should you allow development rights west of Beck Road or west of Canton Center, should you not? Should you, you know, and it was like the hot button issue, and it really didn't get settled until they put the question before the voters and asked, were they willing to tax themselves to the tune of 1.5 mils in order to buy the development rights of the property? And the township turned it down by about a hundred votes at the time. And they revisited it about three years later, and this time it, it went down by a much larger margin because by that time, half of the township's population had just moved in within the last five years, and they didn't really care much about maintaining the rural character of the township. And that was really the impetus for what would become Canton today. So when I look at this rezoning request in the context of, you know, fifty to sixty years of development in Canton Township, it meets all the standards of our ordinance. It's consistent with the future land use map. It's consistent with the surrounding zoning. And honestly, as somebody who bought a home two years ago, I can tell you, the lack of housing stock has increased the property values to the tune, everyone's property taxes have gone up, and at the same point in time, home values have increased substantially because there's just not a lot of houses. There is a demand. So by saying all of that, it meets almost every single one of the criteria in our ordinance. So I will be voting in favor of it.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G six, consider first reading, all right, sorry, G seven. Consider approving amendments to the Partners in Architecture Agreement with an adjustment to the 2024 fire budget.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the budget adjustment and the amendments to the Partners in Architecture Agreement to increase the reimbursable cost for geotechnical analysis and include emergency traffic signal design and engineering services.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. The Canton Fire Department is requesting to amend the original agreement with Partners in Architecture to increase the reimbursable cost for geotechnical analysis and include emergency traffic signal design and engineering services. The additional cost associated with these services is sixty-two thousand four hundred forty-six dollars. The department is requesting an adjustment to the 2024 fire budget to increase the original purchase order with PIA to cover these costs. Deputy Jamie, do you want to add anything to that? Comments or questions? Kate?
Yeah, I think the, the signal for emergency vehicles is really important, and I do note that going east on Michigan Avenue, there are signals and other, like that in other communities, as well as the one that we have here by Fire Station Number One.
I agree with that as well. We just had a meeting this morning about that same topic and the, the speed on Michigan Avenue, although that station is definitely needed, we're going to have to control that traffic to keep our first responders safe.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else? So this is the first step, like you said, like you can control it in front of the Warren Avenue one.
It's a lot easier to do.
Yeah.
This one's going to be a little bit more challenging because you got the east and west side that we're going to have to control, and they got to build something across the road, you know, that they're going to have to, because we're going to have a straight shot out from the station to go west. It's going to be a much larger.
Oh, yeah.
Much larger project.
Right, right. This is just a first step into the future if you think about controlling traffic signals up and down for, and actually, that was something you would ask for previously too, to control lights as you go along.
Yep, that's also coming. We're working on a grant right now that is going to, there's like a transmitter in a truck and it controls, you know, future, as they're driving towards a light, it'll control it and hopefully stop traffic so we have free pass.
Awesome.
Hopefully, yeah, I shouldn't say hopefully, it's going to happen. It's just, it's a process.
Yeah.
And it's expensive.
Virtually, right now, you kind of, you know, make the noise and hope everybody stops.
Yeah, stop. We stop first and then we wait for traffic to clear every time.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G eight, consider authorization of a permit for fireworks display.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to authorize the Canton Township Clerk to sign the permit for Ace Pyro LLC authorizing their permission to possess, transport, and display fireworks in Heritage Park on October 18th, 2024, with a rain date of October 19th of 2024.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. On behalf of Canton's Leisure Services, Ace Pyro LLC is requesting approval for a fireworks display to take place in Heritage Park on October 18th, rain date October 19th, 2024. The application has been reviewed by the Fire Marshal, confirms complying with all state and local requirements for the approval of this permit request. Deputy, do you want to add anything?
No, happy to answer any questions though. This one's pretty straightforward as well with the Fire Marshal checking out the site and looking forward to another fireworks display.
I'm assuming this is for DiValli.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G nine, consider increase of an existing purchase order to GHD for completion of the LOMC Tofima for Fire Station Number Two.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the increase in the scope of work to GHD for the completion of the letter of map change in the amount of nineteen thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars for Fire Station Number Two.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Canton Fire Department is requesting an increase to the scope of work to GHD for preparation and submission of a letter of map challenge to the Federal Emergency Management Agency on behalf of Canton Township for the new Fire Station Number Two in the amount of nineteen thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars. Deputy, do you want to add anything?
Happy to answer questions, and I'm also going to have MSD help us out on this one as well.
Any questions or comments from the board? Tanya?
So this is the last bit, right?
That.
After that, we can focus on building the park next to it.
Agreed. I mean, this has been a long time coming.
Sure has.
I think we're, yeah, even when MSD says so. I mean, we're happy that this is the final time that we can get this thing behind us and get this thing done.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G 10, consider approval of Board Policy Three Procedure for Conduct of Township Board Meetings and Repealing Operations Policy Seven and Create Opportunities for Youth Advisory Council Involvement.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve Board Policy Three, or TB Three, Procedure for the Conduct of Township Board Meetings and Repeal Operations Policy O Seven and Create Opportunities for Youth Advisory Council Involvement in Future Board Meetings.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. To establish standards to review the Township Board of Trustees' meetings and the participation of Advisory Councils and Boards, the Board tasked Clerk Seeger, Treasurer Slavens, Trustee Berninski to serve on an ad hoc review committee to make recommendations on updates to Operations Policy Seven. The committee was tasked with aligning the existing policy with the Board goals of organizational climate and culture and welcoming community to ensure, ensure that the Youth Advisory Council can fulfill its role in the community. As such, the following recommendation was created to provide space on the agenda for the Youth Advisory Council to participate in the Township Board Meetings, and they're all under, they're high school kids, high school students. The committee recommends providing space for two representatives at Township Board Meetings on the agenda and physically in person at the admin table. They would be granted the ability to present at the same time as other boards and commissions to ask questions or give counsel on agenda items during this period, and the ability to provide comments at the end of the meeting during administrative comment. A study session would be scheduled for early 2025 with the newly elected Board of Trustees to discuss the expansion of this role for future years. Operations Policy Seven is a Township Board approval, approved procedure for the conduct of Board Meetings and is outdated processes and language regarding virtual meetings that is no longer relevant. And I know that we'll probably have to add something at the back table there with an extension. Clerk Seeger, do you want to add to this?
Well, there are two other colleagues who served with me on the ad hoc committee. We were initially tasked with, if you remember correctly, our Township Youth Advisory Council, which acts twofold as an opportunity to develop leadership with the youth in Canton Township, giving them skills and the ability to become leaders later on in life, but then two, also is an advisory council in the sense that it can provide the Board of Trustees with advice and counsel as to how our decisions are impacting future generations of Canton Township. They had requested that, an opportunity to interact with the meeting. There were a number of requests that we had received, and so myself, the treasurer, and trustee Berninski met to review those requests, to discuss how we felt like they interacted and, and added to the board meeting itself, and then fundamentally discussed the, the board meetings in general. And we, we looked at all relevant policies that regulated the conduct of the, of the board meetings. Our recommendation was going to be to make some modifications to the existing Township policy and then work with community development or to, to find a way for, for the Youth Advisory Council to, to interact with our meetings. In reviewing the, the procedure or the policy, there is some procedure that was COVID-specific in there that we had recommended removing. There is also information there about the agenda that we thought made sense to make some modifications to. And the largest modification being that we would create a Board and Commission Reports section of the meeting that could occur prior to public comment and prior to the approval of the minutes and the payment of the bills section. In that Board and Commission Reports, any of the subcommittees of the Board could report out on any of the development work that they've been doing over the, over the last couple of months, things like, you know, an opportunity for the Board Rep on the Planning Commission to, to address the Board, an opportunity to hear from our Roads Subcommittee would be an opportunity there. We could have Leisure Services Advisory Council come and speak during that period of time, but to really let the Board and the general community know about the work that happens behind the scenes because this is more of the formal board meeting. And so a lot of the work that happens leading up to this meeting, it's just not publicly talked about, and we figured that would be a really cool transparency piece and give the Board the ability to participate in the meetings. And then at that specific section, we would allow the Youth Advisory Council to address the Township Board, just like every other Township Board, Council, or Subcommittee. And so we would kind of remove them from the public comments section because because they are an official commission of the Township Board and of the township itself. And then we had proposed having a study session or a work group in January to discuss and to work with the Youth Advisory Council about their other requests and to think about ways we can integrate them into governance in the future. You know, but kind of doing this more as a as a pilot. I would offer any of my other colleagues to add anything that I may have missed, left out or to, you know.
Yeah, it was a good meeting that we had. I think it's great that we're gonna be having updates from commissions, the board and commissions, and then also the expectations of Yak to be prompt, be here on time and stay for the whole meeting. So I think it'll be a great experience for them, and it'll be helpful for all of us and for the community to hear what's going on during these meetings, the Transit Commission meeting or the Road Commission, whatever meetings, giving updates. So I thought it was a great.
Yeah, it was, it was a very good meeting. I enjoyed it, and I thought we had some really good discussions. I think that the addition of the the reports from Boards and Commissions section is is gonna be really helpful and important because, you know, all of us have different committees or commissions that we sit on, but we don't often tell each other what's going on in those commissions. And I think that that was a bit of an inequity that we had. And also, it also addressed the inequity that the Youth Advisory Council had during public comment where they would get responses and other people did not, which, you know, to me, I thought was was not fair. And since they are a board-approved, you know, commission for the township, to hear from them during a board meeting and to allow them to give feedback, I think is is important, but didn't want that to be inequitable. And yeah, I'm looking forward to to hearing some of the reports. You know, occasionally, we talk to each other about what's going on if we happen to, you know, have a phone call or or something, but we don't really talk that often. We we had also discussed that, you know, if if a board or commission hasn't met recently, or if, you know, there's not anything really relevant being, or happening in that particular board or commission that month, or that, you know, in that two-week period, then they don't have to make a report. So we didn't want to make the agenda too long either, so.
I think this is great. I appreciate the work that you all put into this. You know, I've enjoyed having the Youth Council come to our meetings and ask questions and give us something to think about at the beginning of the meetings. And I like that we are going to be able to incorporate not only their comments and their feedback into our meetings, but also the other board and commissions that sit at the, that sit at the township. I'm sure most people don't know that we all participate in hours of meetings every month on various boards and commissions through the township. And Kate and I have a, and Supervisor Graham Hudek have a certain vantage point because we interview all of the members of the boards and commissions and would love to have some of the brilliant, creative people from the township that we've brought on to our boards and commissions be able to have a voice at our meetings. And I'll just make a plug that there are some openings on the boards and commissions. So if people want to apply, we do have an application on the township website, and I encourage people to do so.
Tanya, did you have anything or?
Excited about this. A lot of people don't know that, as Summer said, we we all sit on, this is not the only meetings we have. We are all on at least two or three committees, and we're doing background work with them.
Yep, thank you. And like you said, this is a voice for the the youth under, they're all high school students or under eighteen. And by the other boards and commissions, we're well represented. Of course, you as trustees are also the, basically the interface with the residents also. So residents, we get emails and texts and even meeting, people hear public comment and discussions after and before board meetings. All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G eleven, consider approval of Board Policy TB oh four, ordinance amendment preparation policy and repealing operations policy oh thirty-five.
Sorry. Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve Board Policy TB four, ordinance amendment preparation and repeal operations policy thirty-five.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. To ensure uniformity in the preparation of ordinances and text amendments and that the appropriate statutory guidelines are met, along with streamlined process, operations policy thirty-five should be amended. Clerk Seeger, do you want to give more details?
This is more of a pet project over the years with regards to how motions are brought forward and RBAs are are written. There are times when a a first read for an ordinance will come in and the ensuing discussion will be intense and deliberative and result in a need to make modifications between a first read and a second read. But the existing policy requires that the second read happen at the next meeting. And there are times when, when we have had to take multiple months between a first and a second read. And so what we really have is a policy that has an introduction of a first motion, then a second motion to table. And so instead of requiring that, we kind of would mirror like a legislative body in that you would introduce for a first read, and then you would introduce for a second read, and that would be at the discretion of Supervisor's office with regards to when the RBA is made. It does say that it should occur at the next available Township Board meeting. And then this also is the policy that says a first read is on the general calendar and a second read may be on the consent calendar. It does indicate, one one addition is that if there is a modification between a first read and a second read, that both readings should be on the general calendar to allow the board to discuss any modifications that occurred between the first read and the second read. So super nerdy, but we're really just kind of getting rid of the second motion in the RBA, which kind of cleans that up.
Any comments or questions? Kate?
Yeah, I like this a lot, especially because it sort of outlines the process that we would use if a, if a, if there were modifications made, sorry. And I will note that I was told by a former Corporation Council to the to the township that no modifications could ever be made between a first reading and a second reading, which I think defeats the purpose of having a first and second reading because I think allowing time between the two readings gives us and the community time to consider whether or not there should be any modifications.
Anyone else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item G twelve, consider approval of PTO for the Director of Police Services Police Chief.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve granting the Director of Police Services Police Chief PTO at the regularly accumulated rate between July one, twenty twenty-four, and December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, which will equate to one hundred and forty-four additional PTO hours.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Berninski. The Director of Police Services Police Chief entered into a deferred retirement option program drop with the township earlier this year. This allowed the Director's eligible pension benefits to be placed into a trust to access upon formal separation from the township in exchange for a guaranteed three-year employment agreement with the township. To make sure the Director had access to paid time off after entering into the drop, the township front-loaded six months or the PTO into the Director's bank to be utilized for time off purposes only. The township pushes to grant the regularly accumulated hours of PTO to the Director as well, which will equate to one hundred and forty-four additional hours of PTO between July first, twenty twenty-four, and December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, in addition to the time which was front-loaded when the drop was implemented earlier this year. Consistent with the drop agreement between the Director and the township, the Director is no longer eligible for PTO cashouts. In accordance with MERS rules, the Director must retire from the township after this three-year drop period. Deputy Supervisor, do you want to add anything?
This is just an amendment to the drop agreement with the Director of Police Services. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. All right, next we have general public comments. So general public comment, I'm gonna make you look online. Okay, if you have general public comment, you want to raise your hand electronically, and I will let you, I will open it up for you to speak. Okay, we have it. So we have Vijaya Sastry. Let me, so Vijaya, you, oops, went away. You have three minutes. Let me just promote you real quick. A lot of talk, okay. Okay, Vijaya, go ahead.
Thank you, Supervisor Anne Marie and everyone. I would like to bring to your attention the current thing which is going on. In our own backyards, dumping radioactive material has been a very concern for me. So I would like to check with all of you, our community leaders, what all can you do, what we can do, how we can help you so we can support this. This afternoon, I attended Wayne County Commissioners' hearing also. There is serious concerns. So I would like to see if health professionals or engineers, they all can help us to understand what's going on, why. So still, we had to kind of fight for this, especially this is the Wayne County, the highest populated place, and then water source. So this has been real concern. I've been a resident of Canton for more than thirty years. I have not heard about it, so I would like to seek your advice and then know how we can help you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else online want to make a public comment? Anyone in the room? Public comment? Coslin?
Well, good evening again, Dame Coslin. Hey, well, I guess you didn't listen to what I tried to suggest at G ten. We're taking my notes here, a voice of the youth, official commissions being committed. Where do the residents come in? Where does a guy like me come in? I've been, I spent my entire adult life here. Where do we get a commission for the citizens? You know, I attended every meeting for the master plan, never missed one, went to everyone, went to the one last week, the study session, and Aaron put up things on the board and said, you know, stakeholders meeting X and X and Y was said. One of the commissioners said, boy, I wish that person was in the room because I'd sure like to ask them a question about this. Well, I already had said my three minutes prior to the meeting, so I couldn't raise my hand because I couldn't engage. And I'd like to tell that guy, well, this is what I was saying. Now, I gotta wait till the next time of meeting, and I gotta come back and be able to say my three minutes to say to him. But see, you're creating such a subset here. You're creating such a division. Why are you dividing us? Why are you putting the youth ahead of people like me? Why are you discriminating against us? You want to welcome, you want to do everything. Why are you mixing us up? Why can't we all have a group and have a discussion and have these meetings better? Why is this room always empty? Do you ever ask yourself why? It's because you're alienating everybody. We need to be brought together. When we're brought together like something with the trash, look how good the trash turned out. The trash is fantastic, right? Thank you for the trash. We had meetings, we had, we had, citizens were involved, I asked questions, people asked questions, and we came to a positive result. Now, you're worried about the youth. Yeah, let's worry about the youth, absolutely. Everybody needs, but we're all youth, right? We're all youth. Age should not be a factor. It's community involvement and how to get involved. Now, if you want to have different committees, sure, that's great, but let's, let's devise them, let's plan them, let's implement them, and let everybody have the so-called voice at the table, not just select subsets. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? Like to public comment? Okay, public comment is, let's see, anyone else online? Nope, public comment's closed. That's, how about some staff comment? Start with John, anything coming up?
Nothing real immediate, but we've got a very busy September coming with lots of activities going, lots of things happening, both here in Heritage Park, highlighted by our National Peace, Day of Peace here in Heritage Park. We've got our annual event, fundraising event, beer brought and bands, that'll be taking place here in Heritage this year as well due to the construction out of Preservation Park. So our new pavilion construction's getting underway out there, which is great, which also, by the way, the farmer's market is being moved to the Art Square House as a result of that construction. So we've got a lot of moving parts, but all for very good reasons. So we're looking forward to it. But yeah, basically, something going on every weekend throughout the month of September, ending with the Arttoberfest out in Cherry Hill Village on the last Saturday of September. So we look forward to that. But yeah, check the calendars, watch the focus, lots of great activities taking place.
Thank you. Anyone else, Victor? Wendy, anything happening in finance?
You're working on the budget, Dave.
Just one quick note, you're gonna hear from Amy or, I don't know, Christine's gonna reach out to you, but we're quickly coming, finishing up the work in Sunflower Eight on ASR. So there's gonna be something, we want to kind of honor some of the people who've been involved in that project at the end of October. So check your calendars for that. Thank you.
Where the snow flies. Thank you. Deputy Supervisor Joe? Kate? Any comments?
I wanted to wish everyone a happy Labor Day coming up. I also wanted to know, and make another push like Trustee Foster did. We do have boards and commissions that all have residents on them, and we do want to hear those voices. So please, if you are interested in serving in that capacity, please fill out the application on the website. We are going to be scheduling interviews soon, so would love to to have more participation. And I'd also like to note that as a board, we do usually offer little coffees on weekends or throughout the community. So if residents would like to chat with us in a more informal setting, I'm sure we will be scheduling some more of those coming up now that it's the school year is back to, back in session.
Thank you. Treasurer Slavens, Diane?
Yeah, I hope, I'm wishing everyone a happy Labor Day. I did have a resident come to my window today to talk a little bit. She had a great suggestion about a, an area for seniors to walk around in that, like a park. And I thought that was a great idea. Always recommend. Always recommend residents to come and speak on terms like that. I know we have discussed a little bit on some of our trails of adding something like that, but I certainly would love to hear from our residents on great ideas like that.
And you are also part of the Senior Alliance Committee?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Anya?
Yeah, I wanted to wish everyone, all our residents, a happy Labor Day. And I really liked the idea Treasurer Slavens talked about. When we were doing the Heritage Park planning, we talked about having, adding, you know, benches and trees and, you know, having some walking paths that, you know, different aged people could use. So I think that's a great idea. And I also want to reiterate what Trustee Borninsky said. We have conversations, we do them in coffee hours. We also have town halls, we announce them, and we're doing town halls in different communities. We also have done town hall here at the summit. So those are the opportunities for residents to engage with us. The Youth Advisory Committee is kind of part of, you know, it's a youth committee that's, that's part of the township, different kind of programming that we have here. And they are integral, you know, that we want them to participate and have a voice. And for the residents, we have all these other options that people can participate. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Foster?
To echo everyone else, happy Labor Day coming up soon, and happy kids going back to school. I have friends in some communities whose kids went back to school this week, and so it's always very exciting. And yeah, just to echo, there are 18 boards and commissions in the township, and always looking for good people to serve.
Clerk Seeger?
We, the Clerk's Office will be sending a mail, a mailer to almost all registered voters in Canton Township in the next week or two, letting some of the folks who are on the automatic application list for an absentee ballot know that that list is going away at the end of this year. And the reason that the application list is going away is because it is no longer supported in the, in the software by the Bureau of Elections called the Qualified Voter File, because now we have an automatic ballot list, which is a product of the 2022 election reforms that were voted on by, by the voters. So we had about 35,000 individuals on the automatic application list coming out of the 2020 and 2022 elections. There are about 18,000 people still on that list, and there are about 18,000 people on the new automatic ballot list. So the remaining 18,000 folks, along with the typical voters who could just be, you know, just voters in general, will get an invitation to join the automatic ballot list. It is unsolicited, we are sending it out, and if people are not interested in doing so, they can just recycle that piece of paper, and we would appreciate that. But it is postage paid, so return postage paid, so they can mark the box if they're interested in joining, and then they can either mail it back to us or they can put it in one of the drop boxes that we have throughout the township. But that will be coming into the mail. If you do not receive it, it is more than likely because you are on the automatic ballot list already.
Thank you. A lot of, big election coming up.
We are preparing for the November election. We're starting to prepare now, 70 days, 70 days from November 5th, 10 weeks.
And the first ballots go out when, the absentees?
We will be mailing to military and overseas voters on the 23rd of October, of September. We will be mailing the first, and all of the applications we have received for an absentee ballot, we will be mailing on September 26th. So residents will get those in the mailbox probably by October 1st, which is also important for snowbirds, people who may be heading down south for the winter. If you plan on leaving prior to October 1st, you may want to notify the township of your temporary mailing address if you're going to be out of town, because election mail will not forward. That's a security feature. You can't have a ballot forward to a different state. We can send it to another state if you're traveling, but if you have mail forwarding, your ballot will not find you. It will come back to us, we'll have to call you, hopefully, we have your phone number, and then we will have to send it again, which is going to cost the taxpayers twice. So save taxpayer money and let us know ahead of time, and we'll mail your ballot directly to where you're going to be.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And as everybody said, we have boards and commissions. Also, I know many people make appointments with our directors. So I know that that isn't open, and I know that happens frequently. So we have a lot of access points as well as you being all elected officials to be the voice. Thank you. All right, great. So let's have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support. Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Engulien, Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.